To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. Welcome to our January 7th, 2025 city of depot bay. Kim, would you call the floor, please?
Councilor Biese.
Here.
I'm going to skip our new councilor, Denise Worthy there.
Mayor Short.
Here.
Pastor Solomon.
Here.
Pastor Rec.
Here.
And Councilor.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. And we also have first on our agenda this evening, some awards and some recognition. Neil, would you come up and join us for this?
We got to give you a heads up.
No.
This is from the city of depot bay in appreciation for your service on council. You really stepped up last year when we had vacancy and you filled it and we're so grateful. And we're just really appreciate it and we're thrilled that you're going to continue on on our budget committee because your wisdom has been invaluable. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you guys. Thank you.
Can I come up? You might not show up if I told you. Joyce, we're thrilled to give you this to say that
beautiful.
She has been invaluable as a counselor as well. I think you all remember our birthday party. This young lady took it on as chairman of that and it was a fabulous party. We were able to celebrate with the depot family and reconnect with them and honor them as their founding fathers. We ate three gigantic birthday cakes that I could not believe we were going to eat all of them, but we made it. And it was just a fun day after Popeye to just be together.
Well, I had a lot of help. We're from the council, so I want to
You were the one that went to bed at night saying, what the hell is going on here? And I know that. And we also appreciate you being part of our emergency preparedness. This young lady also has a passion for saving lives in this city. And she serves as our president of the emergency preparedness committee. And we're making such great progress because of her ideas, her sleuthing into what other cities are doing. And it's so, I am so grateful.
I'm grateful for you too.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Um, I think we're going to square in folks now. Uh, we're kind of already in the waiting order, so cover that change in additions to this. Oh, I'm sorry. The agenda, yes, we do have one change to agenda this evening. The Jenna Wallace cannot make this easy. She'll be coming on the 21st of January. So she's, you can take that off of your agenda. Okay. Oh, you might have to be bros. Yes, you do. Madam Mayor. Should I stand here? Yeah, I want you facing unless me. This is about you. Okay, so are you sure? Very good. Okay, I Kathy Short. I Kathy Short, do solemnly swear that I will, do solemnly swear that I will, quote the Constitution of the United States, support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the laws thereof, and will faithfully and honorable demean myself, will faithfully and honorably demean myself, in the office of mayor, in the office of mayor, city of depot bay, city of depot bay, to which I've been elected, to which I've been elected, to the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Kathy's our mayor. We'll get to it. I just need you to sign this. Okay. And then I will give you guys a copy. That is council one. Going in the order of your council positions. Okay. So, okay. I Autumn Watson. I Autumn Watson. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the laws thereof, and will faithfully and honorably demean myself, and will faithfully and honorably demean myself, in the office of council member position number one, in the office of council member, position number one, city of depot bay, city of depot bay, to which I have been elected, to which I've been elected, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability. Yay, that's it. Thank you. Okay. He's like, I didn't know I was going to have to do this. We don't tell anybody to ask.
Yes.
I Eva Harmon. I Eva Harmon. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. My apologies. To the head of the Senate, the Constitution of the United States of America. And the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the laws thereof, and will faithfully and honorably demean myself, and will faithfully and honorably demean myself, in the office of council member position number two, in the office of council member position number two, city of depot bay, city of depot bay, to which I've been elected, to which I've been elected, to the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Wonderful. Welcome to I Debbie Coleman.
I Debbie Coleman.
Do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America,
and the Constitution of the state of Oregon,
and the Constitution of the state of Oregon,
and the laws thereof,
and the laws thereof,
and will faithfully and honorably demean myself,
and will faithfully and honorably demean myself,
in the office of council member position number three,
in the office of council member position number three,
city of depot bay,
city of depot bay,
to which I've been elected,
to which I've been elected, to the best of my ability. To the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Congratulations. You know, I keep needing to ask, but they made some slight changes to this. If you could see there was a typo in the one. I will, I've been needing to ask. I keep getting asked. It just doesn't feel like the right word, does it? Never pretty easily. Yeah. All right, um, you guys want one copies? Otherwise we put these in your files. I don't have one. Okay.
Violet.
Violet. Waiting. So if you ever want them. Okay. Uh, next we need to elect the council president. And at this point, I would like to nominate Valerie Slaver in as council president uh, for the coming year. Is there a second? It's been moved to second to nominate Valerie as our council president. Is there discussion on the motion? On the favor say aye. Yes. I will vote to the aye. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion has approved. Okay, welcome. Welcome all of you as well and we will um, have a wonderful year here. Um, has everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda? We did get the accounts payable this afternoon and um, uh, comments here. From Special Olympics. Anybody asking a question? Oh, is there any I'm hiding from you. Any questions on Special Olympics? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Some. Is there a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? All the favors say aye. I just wanted to thank God, Garrett. Yeah. Salmon enhancement.
Question?
Yes.
On the floor, uh, you called for a vote.
Yeah.
Did you not?
Yeah.
Was I the only one that said aye?
Oh, no, we haven't called the vote yet. All the favors say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion has been approved. Thank you. Um, the only guest presentation we have this evening is our deputy. Come on up. We got a copy of your, uh, I think it was November.
Should be November.
Yeah, November. It was.
It was like seven months, but it sounded period. Yeah, holidays.
Yes.
Elections.
Right. Is there any questions for our deputy? Any comments from you deputy?
I would like him to talk, kind of heated with me today, talk a little bit about what you've been doing and why the hours, why the hours do you saw this, when in kind of there's other things you've been doing.
Right, so like
He's very popular in doing this because he does a good job.
And this is also a big place to jump off at certain points. Uh, so for the last couple of months, well, actually over the last year, we've been hiring people, we've been going through a great process of getting all staffed up, which takes a lot of time because we get a lot of applicants, but we also flush a lot of applicants out. Uh, we're finally actually fully staffed at the moment. But what that means, like, you know, I can't remember if you would notice. Fully staffed means we have people going to the academy. They're going through the training without use for like a solo day, right? Yes. But in that, I'm one of the trainers, so I get these trainings through rotate through me and for other degrees. So I have one for, sorry, I've had three throughout November and December. And I just sent one off to the academy last week. So when that happens, things slow down. Because we have to go back to basics. Um, I'm still here, we're still doing the same stuff. But like I said, it's back to basics, it's slowing down, it's coming in here. It is doing policy review, it's doing law review. Um, Ken can probably tell you how much time we just spent sitting right here. And I certainly don't have time to try and get all the info. Uh, but when that happens, like I said, the the self-initiated activity goes down quite a bit. And also not too much time to get it out. Ask it because it's going to happen. Uh, was there anything else we touched on?
What was the, the second trainee again, um, that you saw? I forgot both her names.
So I had Travis Harrison, who's young, who he's not.
Travis, no.
Uh, I had Adrian Reagan, who was very young, very young.
Yep, it's the other one.
Um, Matt Higgin.
Matt.
Yes.
He was very good. Very, very sharp, very quick.
He is.
Very, um, I think he's going to make a really good addition to the Adrian was great too, but this Matt was very
Matt's a little more light experience.
Yeah.
Adrian is, he's great, he's a quick learner, he's a little quiet, but Matt's a little more overt on how much Matt picks up. But yeah, so that's, that's been the last couple of months. We've been staying busy, it's just a lot of training right now, which is also great for me because we all need to relax, still, once in a while, because we don't use it.
It's insane.
Yeah.
Things will heat up this weekend, but we want to be here a bit.
Oh, you're
I'm here, so I know.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
We always love having our tourists out there getting soaked. And, and that reminds me, because one of the things that the council's been concerned about is what happens when Casey's not here. Um, I know that he was sick a little bit recently.
Yeah, of course, I stayed over a week.
But what I was, you know, not saying to yell at him for that was simply that I have seen other vacant county folks stopping people legally. I saw one the other night when I went home, they pulled over, over there. So we're getting, we're still getting presence. I don't know whether it's their driving through or or something.
Especially Sergeant Bill, he tries to make a point to have someone near if I'm not, if I'm still there, just take vacation, whatever it is.
And then we get stayed occasionally. I've seen them all over, so.
Yeah. We're around.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate your being here, Casey.
Thank you.
Any other questions? As we're done?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good year.
At this time, we have a zone change, change application, case file number two dash ZZ dash twenty four. Um, the applicant is the Hills of Depot Bay. The applicant requests Phase Two Zone Change for the Hill Depot Base Plan Development. The Zone Change would be so interplaying the PP suffix to all portions of Phase Two site and recent Lot thirty five. Future authorization power and track L, parking lot adjacent to Lot thirty five to C one.
I work
Kim, you want to skip over from here for me?
Sure. We will now open the public hearing for proposed Phase Two Zone Change for the Depot Bay Hills Plan Development, case file number two dash ZZ dash twenty four. The procedures for the public hearing tonight will be as follows. Staff will provide a summary of the row zone change. There will be testimony from those in favor of the application. There will be testimonies from those in opposition to the application. The mayor will then ask if any, if there is anyone who requests that the referee may open for final edition written testimony. If none, the public hearing will be closed. The city council will then deliberate. There will be no further input from the public during deliberations. And then I'll give you this, you have to try to use it, um, Zach, Zach Pels.
Yes.
Inner city planner with AKS is standing bottom right here.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Thank you for being here. Okay, um, I will hear, we will hear from anyone, uh, in favor of No, Zach, Zach does his presentation. Zach. Oh, oh, okay, Zach.
Sure, no problem. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Well, good evening, everybody, uh, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm Zach Pels. I'm your contract city planner. I've got just a real brief presentation that I'll run through here. If I can share my screen. Get this. Are you looking at the looking at my view, right?
Right. Now you disappeared.
Got it flipped. One second here.
I asked for you to get our screen. Oh, I can do that tomorrow. Yeah, he'll take care of it. Okay. It's too heavy. I have it too. I can put it in the back of my car. But I only held, yeah. Okay. There you go.
Bye, lady.
She's waking up.
All right, well, it's not going to give me the full screen view, but you can see, you can see my slides well enough, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So as, as Madam Mayor pointed out, the request tonight is simply to apply the plan development zoning designation to the Phase Two portion of the Depot Hills master plan area. And I'll show you what that looks like in a minute. The area is currently zoned R two. Um, in addition to that, uh, the applicant is requesting that a tenth of an acre portion of that Phase Two site be changed from R two PD to C one to accommodate the planned observation tower and associated parking that has been part of that master plan. The Depot Hills site is approximately eighty-one acres in total area. It's at the north end of town and it's shown here on the screen at the right, next to that yellow area, era, arrow. Like I said, it's zoned R two. Um, this is the parcel today. The area in yellow is Phase One, and that was an area that the city had, had previously approved. Um, that, that area in yellow, which is Phase One again, is currently zoned R two PD. The proposal would extend that, um, to the rest of the Phase Two area as shown here on the bottom of the slide. There have been a few prior decisions, uh, related to this site since November of twenty seventeen, beginning with the approval of the Depot Hills master plan. Depot Hills Plan Development Master Plan. And then in October of this year, um, upon the request of the applicant, the planning commission approved two, two kind of discreet decisions or, or approved one decision, made a recommendation on the second one. The first was to approve the preliminary subdivision plat for Phase Two and the pertinent streets and utilities, gradient, et cetera. And the second part of that October twenty twenty-four decision was to recommend approval, recommend that the city council approve the zone change that is the subject of tonight's hearing. And that's, that's, uh, the focus, I guess, the, the specific focus of the hearing tonight. It's just, just the zone change. So nothing else, um, included in that prior preliminary subdivision plan is germane to tonight's decision. It's just, just the zone change. So again, um, would be extending that PD designation to the Phase Two area of Depot Hills and then converting a small area of that R two zoning to C one to accommodate again the observation tower and associated parking. There's really just one criterion in your development code that relates to this zone change request, and that's in section one fifty-two, one eighty-six B. And that asks the city council to decide whether the change is consistent with the land use plan for this area. Typically, the land use plan is the comprehensive plan, but since the city approved the master plan in twenty seventeen, that master plan is the prevailing land use plan for the area. And so the planning commission reviewed that again, um, recently and, and determined that the applicant's plan, um, and the requested zone change was consistent with that, um, master plan and are therefore recommending that the city council approve the zone change request. That's before you tonight. So that's all I've got. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Zach? Oh, ready? Then we'll move on to the, um, oh, I do have a question. Oh, okay. Um, Zach, in some places it says point one acres and other places it says like point two six acres in the back from there. It's, it's repeated a few times that the, the difference.
Yeah. It specifically, I guess regardless of the earth, specifically the, I, I, my notes had point one acres. Um, it specifically tracked K in lots, I believe it's lot thirty-six. I can pull up the staff report to confirm that. Thirty-five. Thank you.
Can the audience speak? It's not fine yet.
No. Do we know, of course you're, oh, was there any other, oh, I'm sorry. It's basically here. Um, okay, any other questions for Zach?
No, I didn't get the answer.
Oh. Can we keep forgetting something else?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still looking it up.
Oh, still looking up. Can that be something we can back, can we go back to that on the deliberations?
Yeah, I think, um, I'll, I'll defer to the applicant. If the applicant's not able to, to find that, I'm sure by the time um, we're ready for kind of final questions, we'll be able to find that number.
I can chime in for you, Zach, if, if you'd like. I'm Zach Garrett. I'm with, uh, Parametrics, the engineering firm, working with Hills of Depot Bay. Um, it would be a, a lot thirty-five and tract L and based off our preliminary plat, it's about a quarter of an acre, not a, not a tenth of an acre.
Thanks, Zach.
Okay. Thank you. Can we move on to testimony in favor? Do you want to come on up? Do you want to state your name and your address, please?
Chris Hannibal, uh, Hills of Depot Bay, one six two ninety, uh, Vandorian. And I'm a new, on the year of the half of Hills of Depot Bay.
Wonderful, thank you.
So I think to answer your question, the exact answer is, I think Lot thirty-five is point ten of an acre and the parking lot is I think point one six, so combined is point two six. That's what I think it is. You need to make sure you have handle parking for, um, any kind of commercial area. All right. Um, yeah, I just quickly add my two cents, this is what was approved in the original master plan. Uh, we had the viewing tower, uh, we thought we'd do it at Phase One, ended up doing Phase Two, which is what we're asking for approval tonight. Uh, the commercial area is that people park there, grow up there, there might be a little coffee shop or something. You need to have a commercial license to sell things like that, so that's the, the major change in it. Um, I think we've done a great job in keeping as much open space as possible. Um, the, the nature trail that we built through, let's see on that, on the map, that, that comes through off of Lilian Lane, comes in behind the viewing tower into that commercial area, um, that will be connected throughout as the property is going in. That's what I have. Any questions for me? Yes.
Mr. Hannibal?
Yes.
I'm Rick Easley.
Yes.
Uh, I was, I was there the night that the city council, I was also at a planning commission meeting, public hearing, uh, when they reduced the amount of available area for vacation rentals. And you were okay with that at the time?
I was okay with the area, but we were grandfathered in to the number of units we can have in our property.
So how did, how do vacation rentals fit into this zone change, Phase Two?
It's just part of the pat, master PUD and we have, uh, I don't have the map available. Do you have the map in your pack? Is it?
Thank you.
You have that map?
That, if that was provided, um, Zach, uh, are, uh, Zach Pels?
We do have it.
Oh, you have it.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yes.
If you look at that, uh, what, what we tried to do from day one was separate uh, vacation homes from single family homes that aren't part of the vacation, tourist accommodation. So everything around the viewing tower in that area, those, those are still part of the vacation area. The nine lots going further up, Memorialis Lane will be completely will not be part of vacation area. And the plan for the whole master plan for the development is that in the first three or four or five phases, the majority of the vacation rooms will be built in that core area with segregation, either within the road or open area to, um, single family houses.
How many vacation rentals, uh, do you anticipate having?
It's been a hundred and a hundred and twenty.
You know, uh, I was, uh, I, I testified at, at a council meeting for, and I wasn't on the council at the time, by the way. But, but I was very much for keeping the level of, uh, vacation rentals out there, which as I recall, was about a hundred and fifty vacation rentals.
Thirty down below and a hundred and twenty up top.
Because, okay, not sixty altogether.
No, it's separated from two developments, the two PUDs, the watch, and with those now in the same umbrella as far as six years ago. But there's a hundred and twenty up top. Okay. Those area and sixty down below, sorry, thirty down below the, the watch area.
Wow, okay, good. I, uh, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any testimony of opposition to the application?
I would too.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Are there any more people, uh, in favor of the application? Um, okay, so anybody in opposition to the application now?
Madam Mayor? My name is Bill Mazzella. And I reside at four oh five Southwest Coast. And I wasn't around in twenty seventeen, so I wasn't privy to what all of those negotiations were, but I, I know that that particular development uh, has been talking about being a quote unquote neighborhood development. And it concerns me that, you know, in the city of depot bay, early history, uh, the forefathers of the city had reduced and eliminated vacation rentals in all residential zones. And they did that very deliberately and they did And they did that very deliberately and they did it with purpose. And, um, while I, I get, and of course I'm a vacation rental manager, so I, I'm in that business. But I, I believe that when we're talking about thirty-three potential properties there, twenty-four of them being vacation rentals, that we no longer have a neighborhood. We have a commercial zone. And so in effect, what we're doing is we're taking our residential zoning and turning it into commercial zoning. And I just, I don't, like I said, I don't, I wasn't here back in 2017 when all that occurred. There was hearsay that it was fifteen percent of the built, built out lots. And what I'm hearing now is it's fifteen percent of the land, which is neither here nor there. I just think we need to get back to what is happening up there and making sure that it's fitting with the character of, of our city. And turning an art facility to commercial zoning is, is concerning to me. The other thing that I would almost kind of like to, to, uh, point out a little bit is, it was my understanding that the height restrictions that they were asking for from zone number one were specifically designed to meet a problem with parking. And I would think that as we moved into additional phases, that we would have resolved those kinds of concerns specifically with, um, increases in lot widths, increases in lot depths to accommodate the parking that's going to be necessary to handle vacation rentals. And then the third thing is I would just like to encourage the council, uh, with staff and, um, city works to just make sure that we've got correct operational agreements, um, in place for any and all of the water and sewer systems that are going on up there. Um, you know, I understand we've got pressure lines and we've got another tank up at the top. And who's going to be responsible for when things occur? Um, and, and just making sure that there are proper operational agreements in place for all of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further testimony in opposition? Yes, Krista?
Yeah, that comes.
This is a little wider, but just one. But I'm Krista Robinson. I'm lucky enough to be born and raised in Depot Bay. And I've served one time on the city council. My family's always been involved and extremely proud of Depot Bay. But we are changing and I, for the last thirty years at least, someone comes in and purchases property and within months or after asking for a zoning change, and they get it. And so then it's like it worked out, oh, just come and buy it, they'll give you a zone change. I just, in this one, uh, because they think too much is too much. They bought what they bought, knowing what it was at the time. And the vacation rentals are just out of hand, out of hand in every neighborhood. And so I would ask all of you that you really consider this. Why do we even have zoning of its own? It'll be changed all the time. Am I coming across straight? I'm worried. I'm worried about Depot Bay. It's the most beautiful town on the coast, but it's changing. It's changing and I want it to still be where families live and businesses thrive on Main Street. I don't want it to be motel zone, and it's coming to that. It is coming to that, and it's sad to me. So I just wanted you to know my feelings and how important Depot Bay is to me and all of my family and my parents, how hard they work, Bob Jackson. Uh, I was thinking, tonight this is going back, Bob Jackson and my mom would be so proud of Autumn. I mean, and of all of you, I, I thought I'd say it. So please, keep some of the older residents, I mean, that have been here a long time, what's in our heart and what we value. We need to do it to maintain ours, Depot Bay. Okay? Thank you.
Pardon me, Krista?
Mm-hmm.
Did you sign in? Did I miss that?
Oh, no, probably.
Please do. So any other one, testimony in opposition?
I guess that I might get, Clark, I'm on phones today.
Thank you, Krista. Is there anyone, um, who would like the, the record to remain open for additional written testimony? Nobody? Okay. Um, since there is none, the public hearing is now closed. And now we will open, open for, uh, council deliberations.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
There is an opportunity for the applicant to rebut if, if they would-
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
To do so.
Yes, did you want to?
You know, I, I appreciate how beautiful Depot Bay is and, uh, we've been, I've been part of the community since 2008. We purchased in 2008, took nine years to get the master plan approved. You know, my wife and I have property here now or, or our own house here. We don't want it to be a commercial zone. Uh, we're trying to build, um, more affordable housing in the Watch area. We're working through that right now. And, uh, I, I think that the combination of, uh, vacation homes are coming to the coast, the tourist transient access, great for the city. I've been here at meetings when we're trying to find ways to figure out how to pay for the boat launch or pay for docks. And I think these are good ways of helping, um, in, in a clean way, in an organized manner, being able to have vacation homes. We're not going to put in hotels, we're not putting in motel sets. We're doing our best to keep all the trains we can keep and keep all the open space we can keep as, uh, council, which on that was asked in the past, and, and we're working diligently with, um, Corps of Engineers and with, uh, uh, DNSL DEQ to make sure that all the weapons are preserved down below and everything. So I, I, I think we're, the development happens and I, I'd like to believe that we're developers with a very loving hand and we want to be part of the community, be part of the community, be part of, um, let's call it, uh, sustainable, good growth for Town Depot Bay. So that's what I would say. Any more questions for me?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I'm not super familiar with all of this, but saying that this is phase two, there's obviously more phases to come. Um, do you anticipate that you're going to ask for more commercial zoning beyond this point two-six acre of land up there?
No, not at the, not at the top part. The top part is just the, um, along 101, it's already in the commercial zone. In fact, no zone change won't happen.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, it's just for that one little viewing tower, coffee shop type thing at the top. So that's it.
This will be the only commercial zone in this facility.
In the Hills of Depot Bay, are you going for this?
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I have a question. Since we're talking about vacation rentals and you hear the concern about this being turned from the R2, which we expected in our housing code says residential and in our comprehensive plan, oh, for housing and seasonal, excuse me, the residence and seasonal residence. In residency means thirty, thirty days or more. I'm just wondering, um, and the city council, I mean, the planning commission did change the, the, um, amount. Instead of fifteen percent, I think they realized the intent was to restrain it. And it was, but they said it wrong. So instead of fifteen percent of the area, it's supposed to be fifteen percent of the, um, units. And it was changed, but because you had gotten your master plan, it was all grandfathered in. And I'm just wondering if there's any way to appeal to you to not build out that full hundred and twenty, hundred fifty vacation rentals and keep it more residential. That's what we need. We need housing each time. We don't need vacation rentals. I know that's not true of us tonight, but I would ask you to really consider it. I think, you know, you want to be good neighbors and, you know, that would be a way to be more fitting with the town.
And I, I, I hear that loud and clear, and I think that, um, as the development grows and we see what the demand is, if people don't want vacation homes and don't want that, and they want more residents, they'll build more residents. I think that if you look at, uh, phase one, Railwatch down below, there were twenty-one lots. I know for a fact now, all of them, except for one, was a, a vacation tourist accommodation. And of those, I don't know the exact number that actually have licenses, but I think only a handful of them took license. The rest of them are just living there. So that, that, that's what's happening. People don't want the vacation, they just live in the house and they like, maybe they really like the house. That's what we see happening and I, I think that, uh, maybe we'll see more of that as people want to be there. I think that we're getting families that, uh, live in different areas that want to have that vacation home and come in there and they can afford it by renting a building. More thoughts, questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I would just echo Fran's sentiment that, um, our market for short-term rentals in Depot Bay is flooded. We have a lot and I really think we should focus more on, um, residence and housing. We really do agree.
That's the one that I think, uh, what we discussed this before, but it would be, uh, affordable, more affordable rental houses and properties that we're going to put in in phase two this week for, um, approval from the weapons to make sure that it's okay to do it. If we want to do it in the area, that'll be thirty-two, um, cottages that will be, uh, for rent uh, for affordable, for sale. We talked about pricing last time and I think you liked my pricing when I said it that time, and that's what we're aiming for. Yeah, so we see that need as well, and everybody who's working at, at Hills of Depot Bay right now, they're either commuting in or they are, um, sure, many of these are new for it that are, uh, extremely expensive for a rental.
Other comments? You want to add something? Yes.
Um, I'm new here, um, but I agree that we have an awful lot of rental units. There's more than fifty and potential thirty more just down the street. I don't think we have manpower to maintain all those units locally. And I don't know if it's going to be difficult to get people to drive from nearby cities to, to do the maintenance on that many rental units.
Well, that's close. And look down below, we have, uh, a hundred, I think it's eighty units, apartments or, um, cottage-style houses that we will be renting to, uh, can't call it workforce, can't call it affordable housing unless we actually sign up for one of those acts. And, um, uh, that's part of the, the, part of the, part of the housing up in the building will be twenty percent to two hundred percent of the house in the building will be for, for the residences.
Thank you.
That's part of that. That, that'll help me, that'll be the workforce will help me to do this.
What's the timeframe for the affordable, affordable housing piece of it? And it's just a wild idea. No, I won't hold it to it.
I, 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 I was hoping I would have an answer by last October. It looks like now I have a meeting with, um, DSL, uh, the Development Design, Design Group. DZ?
DZ.
DZ, uh, next Wednesday. It's DSL DEQ. And, uh, it asked a lot of questions, Corps of Engineers, about what we're doing, what, what we've had a new delineation done to really accurately show the, um, aquatic resource areas. And, uh, we did our, uh, our geological study, did all of the, to make sure that there was no, um, historical artifacts or things that we shouldn't get in here. And I think we have a very clear picture now of that, I think they do as well. And we're just going step by step with them. I, the previous owner of the land down below did a few things that, um, he didn't follow the steps. And now we're going to follow all the steps. So I think that we'll have, to answer your question, I think between April and September, we'll have that final, uh, approval from DEQ DSL with our new weapon delineations. And we're moving our streets and our houses appropriately to protect all of the, um, you know, beautiful trees and levels there.
One other quick question. Are you, you're aware that, that your property is within our urban renewal area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we should, we should talk more about that. There's some opportunity there that maybe we have it all explored.
Yes, we, we'd love to talk about that with, uh, what could be done.
Yeah, keep that in back of my mind.
It's in front of my mind.
That too.
Some of these phases of moving will be going. You, you can't, if, like, you ask about commercial on 101, you, I'd love to see a grocery store or something in Depot Bay. You can't do that if you don't, if you have enough, um, uh, rooftops.
Yeah, yeah.
You won't get a, a, a team to come in and put it there, so.
I actually talked to a couple of business owners too and told them that this was on the agenda tonight, just to get them. I'd like to hear what people have to say. Business, local business owners are absolutely in favor of some commercial out there, up there in that space. You know, not, not in the neighborhood, you know? So there's some, you know, I think you're doing it with, with a lot of, a good process.
I, 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 I'd like to believe that we do that. I mean, we did it at, uh, at Heather Oldwell, kind of on boards. And, um, I'm very aware that we want to keep as many trees. I think my wife is as big a tree owner as anybody in this room. And, uh, we really, um, I'm giving you a little secret. We just bought the properties to the north, the Timber Conservation Park. And we are going to put it in nature trails. It's going to keep it. Instead of it being a timber, they call it timber conservation, we cut down trees. So we're going to, we're going to do part of the, we're not about to get, we're not going to cut it yet. So that's our-
Beautiful.
That's our goal with the seven acres to the north. We pushed that in December.
Wow.
A long time. It's not easy. And it's a timber company. My, my grandfather was a timber guy, so it's, it, it, yeah.
Hard.
It was, but maybe we, I think it's a good, it's a good acquisition. A lot of trees, you put a lot of nature trails. We do a lot of good, we think, for that community and for the, for the town. It's not, that's not in the urban zoning or anything, so it's just, just a little.
Okay.
Here's another question.
Yeah.
When is the water tank going to be constructed?
It's constructed, it's up.
Oh, it's up.
It is, uh-
It's a little hard.
We're in the process of moving the-
Yeah, getting the main into the tank.
Okay.
The main will go into the tank and will be operational, I'm guessing, in July.
Yeah, we're spring, yeah, spring into it.
What about the operational agreements with the city? What is it if something breaks or the pressure happens? Do you have a?
That's still in the works with our engineering.
So we don't, th- those agreements come from the city before we turn anything over to you. You, you will have everything in place. We will operate, we obtain the water tower, utility agreements in place, correct? But it's what I understand.
But the sewage all comes to us, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And we, we can handle the sewage. There's no I and I.
Yeah. Can't say never.
I'm reading her law. Any other questions? It's already. Do we have to go back to?
No.
Opposition?
No.
Okay, um. Do we ask if we leave the record open again?
No.
Okay. And-
The hearing's closed.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Uh, the city council will now deliberate on the, uh, subject before us. And does everyone have a chance to read, uh, the conclusion drafted by our, uh, by Zach?
And does everyone had a chance to read the conclusion drafted by our, by Zach? Okay. Everybody's jumping in at once? All righty, if there's no deliberations, then we have three options.
Your honor, I'm sorry. You just asked a question, if everybody had read the deliberation.
Right.
Or, I mean, the, read on the issue or the conclusion.
Right.
And I thought we were still waiting for an answer, and then you told it.
We're open for deliberations.
Okay, we are.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
There is a, there is a accompanying ordinance on, starting on page thirty-two of your packet. So if the, I guess if the council decides to move to approve the application, this would be the ordinance that be moving to approve.
Okay. We, Zach, we put the ordinance approval later, because it has to go through the first reading and second reading and process, so yeah.
Okay, understood, thanks, Kim.
Okay, well, hearing about deliberations, then I'm going to ask for a motion from one of the three options that we have. Continue the public hearing, I request the applicant provide additional information. Or if the council finds the request fails to satisfy the ordinance standards, it can move to deny the request. Or if the council finds the request satisfied, say after the whole criteria, it can remove, if you move to direct staff to prepare funding for adoption. So we have these three options, is there a motion to go forward with one of these three?
Your honor, I would make a motion to direct staff to let out the findings.
Pardon me, counselor, could you do a motion to approve and direct staff to the findings?
Uh, I'd amend that to a motion to approve with the adoption of the findings, thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll forget that.
It's been moved to second to approve the applicable criteria and direct staff to prepare findings for adoption. Is there discussion on the motion?
I'll weigh in. Thank you, everybody coming in tonight, by the way, we all appreciate it. I heard Bill Mucella talk about the issue of residential zoning. I also heard Krista address that issue, I heard those remarks loud and clear. My main concern tonight is that we have, you know, that we'd be really meticulous in adopting anything as we go out because I, I don't wanna see a lawsuit, I know nobody up there wants to see lawsuits. And we wanna have fair treatment with everybody. This is, uh, this is where, what I'm thinking. Krista, I think you're right, this town is changing. That we have adopted a law that says that there aren't gonna be vacation rentals in residential areas. This law says they have to be in commercial zones. Now, the thing about this development, it's a PUD, and the whole thing about PUDs is they have to be flexible. And, or they're allowed flexibility, and, and what you're seeing is that flexibility in action. You mentioned Bob Jackson tonight, and, you know, there's a man that I have a great deal of love for, and I spoke with often. And I believe it was Bob who told me when Worldmark came in that if we had one more Worldmark, we'd be set. And, you know, that was pretty prophetic, because that Worldmark right now provides, I believe, about sixty percent of our general fund money that comes down. And imagine if we had one more Worldmark. And, and it's not just that it's a money machine, but its location is ideal. It's at the north end of town, away from the neighborhoods, away from other congestions. It has its own parking, it is like its own community, it's physically isolated from the rest of us. So that we can have this wonderful tourism business that floods our city coffers and keeps us afloat without much impact on the rest of us. That's the advantage of having it at the, up at the north end, where this kind of business is isolated. I'm kind of excited tonight to hear that there are, I believe I heard a hundred and fifty vacation rentals up there, because when this whole issue came up that Fran referred to, and by the way, there is a memo that I saw that you sent out, it was a great memo, a timeline on this whole thing, correct?
I, I did that, yes.
And, and so refer to that, for, if you wanna see what the plan is out. But I thought that we had lost ninety homes up there, we were down to sixty, not, or that there were gonna be a hundred and fifty, and that that division brought that change to the ordinance, brought it down to sixty. So I'm glad to hear that we have a hundred and fifty of these. You know, I did, I ran some numbers, and this was several years ago, based on a ten percent TRP, but if we have eighty new vacation rentals in this town, and they are seventy percent occupied, and I heard the seventy percent is the figure that vacation rentals are that in Deepo Bay is anecdotal, that's another million dollars of revenue for our town. And that's, I think, what we have to look at right there. So in terms of, in, in, counselor Watson, you said that we are flooded with vacation rentals right now, and I'm not sure, I'm interested if you could expand on that maybe, because I think what we do need is we need some kind of inventory of housing in this town. And actually find out what we need and what we don't need, or what we have and what we don't have. So when you say flooded, what is it you mean by flooded?
This is a piece. We need to continue on here and make a decision on the
All right, well, I'm, I, as a result of that, and having wasn't to argue with this the manpower issue here, I think that this is actually a pretty good deal for us.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion before us?
I just like to add that I, I am going to reading all of this material, but it actually read through the three hundred pages or something. And it would appear to me that all of this has already been unplanned, the only issue for tonight is someone was going to use six acre as a commercial zone. I understand all these other issues regarding residential versus vacation rentals, and those are all big issues for the city discussed, but in reality, it looks like it's already been discussed, it's written in kind of this, their whole plan has already been established, all researched, and I think it's kind of been already done, it's just kind of a formality of the plan. And based on him saying that he's not going to ask for more commercial zoning, I don't really see any reason to hinder what they're doing at this point, because it's already been discussed many, many times. And very planned out. So I, I don't, I mean, which is why I'd agree just to approve it, because they've clearly done their research, and they presented it to us in the city, and we've given the public every opportunity to speak about it. And we all have opinions about vacation rentals, but it's, that's not the issue at hand.
Any further discussions? Kim, with the, Kim, do you want to call the workforce decision? Okay. Where can I get down? Counselor Beasley?
Yes.
Casper Poland?
Yes.
Mayor Short?
Yes.
Counselor Solomon?
Yes.
Counselor Reck?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
No.
Uh, Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Okay. We are six and one, so the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you both for being here. Okay, we will go on to our commission and committee reports. Emergency preparedness, Joyce, come on up, Joyce.
I'm gonna put this up here, because nobody can hear me particularly. So far, our, our meeting members, Counselor Poland and Harmon, I'm with the emergency preparedness committee, and we just committee for maybe about four years, and we are trying to basically gather supplies for people who take their food faster, that's pretty much what I go with. There's different ways to do it, we're always exploring different ways to make sure that we get the sleeping bags and food and water and things like that, make a place as well to be on. We have one cache so far, and that's in the city hall. We've recently opened a storage unit, we're also putting supplies. We want to have caches, our goal is to have a cashier here in strategic places all over the city. So if there is a tsunami, there's an earthquake, it goes to get to something fairly reasonably close to our house. It's been a slow, expensive process to get other locations, but we're not discouraged, we're just continuing to work on this type of day and other projects to get supplies to our citizens. And so another thing that we do is that we have community education conferences. We have at least one a year, we're having another one, and we're hoping to have it in March. And we have two guests that are lined up, and they're the same people that are going to visit us next week at our, our emergency preparedness meeting, which is usually the second Monday of the month. And those, those individuals are Alora Dayball, who is with Dagami, and Arnold, who knows with Dagami by the chance. It's a, it's a map that you might see, and it shows you, like, if you have Deepo Bay, it shows you where the hazards are. So if you're living, like, here, like, oh, that's the flood, you know, and this just gives you an idea of where strategically and historically, I guess is a better word, where the floods have gone into. And it's just a, it's, it's just a good map to, to be aware of. What they're going to talk to us about is like the geological issues of Deepo Bay. We also have a woman that's going to join us, they, they go in pair a lot of times to meet with other cities. And this particular woman, his name is Felicia Omeltz Schultz, he was also, she's a resident of Stonebridge, and she's a coastal hazard specialist. So we're opening, having our meeting next Monday at three o'clock. We're lucky to come and work in on our agenda for the March meeting as well. And I had an interesting phone call this morning, I received a phone call from a gentleman, has a long name. Um, one second. His name is Christian Foden Vinsel. And he is a Oregon Public broadcast, RPB journalist, and he's definitely an award winner, I think he won the Beep Off Award. And he started out the conversation saying that he's coming to the Deepo Bay area, and he is assigned to figure out the history for Sir Francis Drake. Is he really the person that discovered Oregon? He's trying to look into that to make sure that he knows exactly what happened. He wanted to know if I had any suggestions about who might have, like, ancient history to help him out. And I said, well, we have some families that have been here for a long time, that have heard some stories. So reaching out to those families or anybody that's heard these types of stories to help him with this research. I also suggested that he talk to Lincoln County Historical Society, you know, and know that there's a state park for that tourist area, and the tourist shop is, you know, that might be a good place to go, so make some suggestions. So if anyone has any links for me, I'll be glad to, to give it to them. And the second part of this conversation, he said that he's aware of our emergency preparedness committee. He had Mayor Short's name, Kim's name, my name, and wanted to know what we're doing. I told him that we're working, like I just explained, trying to get supplies in safe places for individuals. We have different projects that we're thinking about, and we're, it's like putting bins of supplies in garages, we're thinking about having a time where citizens can come to a certain place and have pre-ordered supplies to put in buckets to remind people that you need to be self-sufficient. So there's different things that we're considering. So if he wanted to know if he could come and meet with me and different people, you know, I suggest he, he sure could. And he's interested in, in learning more about our caches. I told him that we had three HOAs in the area that were really very, very wonderful, they're years ahead of what we have been able to do. We're working with them. So he's interested in meeting with some of them, he just wants to know really what we're doing with Deepo Bay. And so he's going to come out at one o'clock next Monday for our three o'clock meeting and meet with us. But I was happy that an organization like that would first of all have heard about us, and was, would have an interest in learning more about what we're doing. And, so that's what I have there. And then they're also, just if people aren't aware, they're having a there's, it has nothing to do with our debate, but there's an emergency power solutions rally, and that's going to be on the twentieth of January at the, at the community center. And primarily, they're, they're doing, this is a separate organization, is trying to provide, to find out how to provide power to the city, and kind of different plans. It's going to be kind of a, a long day, it's like ten to twelve, a session was of community leaders and then having little seminars. It's going to be a question-answer session, a hot love, and then a dance, it's gonna go to like eight-thirty. So if anyone has not received a flyer but like one, that film or video, they'll be glad to do that, if you want. Uh, let's see, what else? I think I've covered everything, but there's a lot going on, we're very excited about what we're trying to accomplish. Like I said, coming, getting the cash together is a slow process. We thought we, we have a location by the post office, and the seller gave us a certain rate, but then he raised it. And we decided as a committee not to, to go with that extra money. We're looking at a possible cache in Stonebridge, they're nice enough to offer some land up there, so we have some issues we're trying to work out there, but we do have, like I said, a storage unit now, where we're having supplies, because we do realize we need to put supplies somewhere. And I know this is a storage unit, right, we at least will have them.
Yes, right. Yeah. Thank you for that important, and thank you for serving, and continuing to serve.
Thank you.
Um, so these are the folks that are working with the city of Deepo Bay. Yeah. I'm wondering, maybe they give you a place for tables? Or are people already interested in emergency power and stuff, it might be really the another place, what's your suggestion? So they will be there. In fact, I, I gave you a flyer tonight, because I'm hoping every counselor can be there, and if you wanna sign up, they help that would be even more good. Uh, so yeah, it's gonna be really a fun day, and we've got people flying in from back east. We've got one fellow that works with the Department of Energy that is gonna be flying in from back east, that has national connections that are gonna be here. So we are inviting the governor, our legislators, and everyone, and all of our coastal neighbors to join us. And so, yeah, it's gonna be a, a wonderful day, and lots of information for people to explore and get questions.
Yeah, we're really lucky, because we just so happen to have several people that live in North Dakota that, you know, presented this to us a year, so the government's saying we're, this all, you know, something we wanna do for Deepo Bay, make sure that we have more power, like if we have an emergency situation, so I think we'll be doing that.
It's gonna be funny. Yeah. Free hot dogs and hamburgers, and then cocktails and I'll have my juice bar set up.
I do, thank you very much for giving us this.
I do, Joyce, thank you very much for giving us a little nice report. Joyce, I absolutely support at about ninety percent of our emergency preparedness committees. But this idea of caches, caches, I have not completely thought into it, especially going out and seeking to purchase property. And, and pretty much, I, which came as a surprise to me, it was one of the great surprises that my councillor career was to find out that, was to have this just suddenly appear on the agenda suddenly one day, that we were going to, we were in the process of purchasing property that the committee had already gone out and looked at. And I feel very uncomfortable with that kind of a deal. I mean, the council should be directing what it needs to be done. We need to discuss these types of property purchases at our level, and I know that we do. But I would give no authority to no committee to go out and look for property, I just wouldn't do that.
Well, we had, I presented the property by the post office in February and told the council what it was. And I think I gave monthly reports about my conversations with this particular realtor. And then at one point, I don't know if you're not, but I did a presentation, I drew a map, or I have a map, excuse me, up there. And I showed everyone where the locations were that we would have to purchase properties sometimes. Some property might be given to us, but I'm not going to be during that particular meeting, but I tried my best every meeting to bring up the fact that caches, in our opinion as a committee, is a good thing. Lincoln City has them, Newport has them, Seaside has them, Cannon City has them. It's, it's something that I think is necessary. I know that you're in favor of having all of our supplies here from this general area. But if you're in, by the post office or wherever, that might be hard to get. And so that's why we're treating strategically, trying to have them in various places. And any, any money that we're spending is always on the party council. And I don't like surprises either, so that's one thing that we've always been upfront with. Immediately told the council what the cost was when I heard about it. And then when we found out that he wanted more than $10,000 more, then that's when our committee decided that was not anything we wanted to pay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Yeah.
On Monday, when you meet with the gentleman of OPB, is that going to be here?
Yeah.
Can you come back?
Absolutely, yeah, everyone's invited. And I'm going to encourage everyone to come and especially the new councillors to learn what we do. We're going to have, like I said, a really terrific meeting that will be talking to us this time. We don't always have guest reservations, but these are two that I think will be really good.
That's true.
I'm sorry.
Well, one question also there, you mentioned that you were meeting on the second Monday of the month, what about the second meeting?
We, we decided just to have it once a month.
Oh, good.
And that was moving to net. I think the last meeting, which is felt that we probably just sort of won and won the evening.
Excellent, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce, I appreciate it. Harper, Jack, did you have something for us to see here?
Since none of us in the Harper Commission were willing to meet on Christmas Day, we did not have a meeting until seven.
Darn.
Darn me.
So, end of January.
End of January, okay. So any other final questions? Parks Commission? Kim, did you have something for parks?
I think we're in good shape.
Okay. Salmon enhancement is in good shape, you got arrowfishes?
Got eggs.
You got eggs, you're feeding them and everything's okay with salmon?
Everything's done great.
Okay, good, thank you. All of them before then for public comments? Any public comments up on the board there, Kim? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a, before it's a resolution number five seven four dash twenty four, twenty five. The resolution that Deep Bay City Council is sealing that resolution five six eight dash twenty four amending the authorized signers for the deep bank checking account and the aft bank money deposit account and designating authorized officers and city officials. Is there any discussion on this resolution? I'm just had a question. So we do have, I don't know what it's called, like checks and balances, about how many signatures are needed. Is there a way we could reference that, not the whole back book, however is that, but somehow reference the.
I think that's in another resolution, I think that's in another policy.
That's two signatures, we're going to reach out. Yeah, the way it's written in this one, it appears that, you know, it says that, you know, you can do, I don't have it right here for me, but, you know, you can do checks and you can do safe deposit boxes and stuff. It appears to say that anybody who signs can actually do those transactions.
It's split in two different things, the check signer, she can do, for example, accounting specialists. First of all, they don't do anything without me knowing about it.
I know, but it's not in the resolution.
Secondly, she can only, she's a backup check signer, more hype, rare. She can deal with the safe deposit box, but she doesn't have authority, that's why the others are listed as authorized officials, which is only the mayor, the council president and the city administrator. She just has the authority to sign checks. I did increase her ability to make wire transfers, so we didn't have to keep doing it. We're trying to get that changed because wire transfers, like the way you have to go to the bank, is a thing in the past. We should be taking our time around the bank. There is another document, I just don't know what it is, I'll hand that, notes we have to.
Do you want to do a look that up and pass that on to us then?
I can do that.
Okay. I don't need it passed on to you, what I'm, can somebody tell me that, where we, what's the number, what page number, Mark, who's?
This is page of thirty, thirty-one.
Page what?
Thirty, thirty-one.
What I was concerned about is the seeming permission given, even though I know there is other, you know, checks and balance document in place, but on that way I'm reading it, there could be confusion. And to me, this is important enough that we might at least want to, even if we have to say pursuant to resolution number and fill it out later so we don't.
All this says is that Jenny, for example, our accounting specialist, is not authorized signer on the checking accounts and the safe deposit box, that's it. That's all she has the ability to do. The rest of it is between the mayor, the council president and the city administrator. And we remain, which will have to update the resolution. I did, I can amend this, but I do, I did find out, I argued with the bank, we do have to put our names in there.
And I thought they were in the resolution.
No, just the titles.
Oh, titles, okay.
So Jenny's name is in there because she's replacing our previous accounting specialist, but they also want our three names in there.
So we need to.
I just need to change it to add the names.
So, so there, here I'm finding I have a problem, I don't need to be difficult, I'm just. It says, be it further resolved that the below listed city officials are designated as authorized officers to request account maintenance, signer changes and other administrative updates required by the county of the city. And.
Correct. That means the three of us, one of us, you know, what have you done before? You've changed signers on accounts before, you've done various different things, one of us, but not Jenny.
Right, but be it further resolved that the above named authorized officers, which includes Jenny, are authorized to have power to execute such other agreements.
Pardon me, she is not designated as an authorized officer. The only authorized officers that are specifically designated in the resolution are the mayor, the city administrator reporter and council president.
Okay, so. I just, so what I want to say is, they are authorized to have power to execute such other agreements, including but not limited to these special depository agreements and arrangements regarding the manner, conditions or purposes to which funds, checks or other items the city may be deposited or withdrawn from such other acts as they deem reasonably necessary. To me, it would be easy enough to say pursuant to the checks and balances and.
There is no resolution that talks about checks and balances regarding setting up accounts, closing accounts. The only checks and balances are related to that checks must have two signatures.
So somebody alone to set up another account.
So currently, and the way it's been, Mayor Short can go to the bank and close an account. She can go to the bank and open an account. We've had that, that's been.
You could transfer funds from a money market to.
Well, we do that all the time. Jenny does it on my approval, otherwise we would have to go through a bunch of.
Right, and so where does it lay the help of procedures?
Or, there's no procedures, this is just the way we do it internally to control it. We are working on procedures.
I thought we didn't have one when the auditor said we needed further checks and balances a few years ago.
I, they never created any.
I thought we were, our audit was approved based on the fact that we had improved our checks and balances.
I can't answer that question, I just know that when I came on board, I remember we didn't talk about it, but there was nothing actually put into place. We have them because we do the separation of duty and we're still working on them because as we staff change, I've been learning a few things where it's like, no, 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 we're going to do it this way, or somebody else does this piece. So we're working on that to get it and we're going to get it finalized, but I'm very flussy about these accounts. I know what's happening in all of them because they go through them with me. And Kathy, if she was the mayor, was to set up an account, she would tell me where she did because we work together, so. And she would agree with that topic.
I think we're good to go. Is there a motion to accept resolution five seven four dash twenty four, Mike?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution five seven four dash two five.
Is there a second? I'll second that, is there discussion on the motion?
I would actually agree with Fran that I think we need to do a little bit more wording in here to make it a little more clear, the very last.
We can, we can work on that, but at this time, we need to go forward with our accounting specialists having authorization at this point.
Council, I would be happy to talk to you about that, so when we put these things into a documented policy that the council will approve, we can have the specifics in there.
By when?
Depends on how much of a priority you consider it, or we doing other things like the audits.
It's also important that we get the former people off of those.
Yeah, and very much so, because it's kind of hampered a little bit, or because Jenny can't do some of this stuff. So currently, either I have to do it or the mayor thankfully comes in to fix their things.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Okay, we also have an ordinance, we have a first reading. And an ordinance is we do a motion to read it by title only. This is City of Deep Bay ordinance number three five three dash twenty five. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Deep Bay, ordinance number twenty four as amended, to establish an overlay zone of planned development over certain parcels and changing the zone designations from R two to C one for certain portions of the affected parcels relating to proposed planned development known as the hills of Deep Bay Phase Two. Is there a motion to accept this ordinance three five three dash twenty five in title only?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So this is the first reading of this ordinance, has everyone had a chance to go through it?
This is just a first reading of the title, which you've already done.
Right, so now I'm opening for discussion. Is that a reading?
To, for the first reading, for the.
Yeah, for the first reading, you can have a special reading by title.
Yep.
Is there a discussion on the ordinance? So we close the discussion and go on with the meeting, Kim?
You need to do the vote on approving it by title, reading.
I did title, I did title.
You did, but I didn't have your approval.
Yeah, we, everybody said aye.
Okay.
It was unanimous. So we go on to the second meeting, second reading, get to the second.
I did not, we did not, I don't think we put this in as an emergency provision, we did not. There's no emergency provision on that. So Zach, these things don't get adopted right away, they get adopted per our usual code, correct?
Yeah, so if it's, if it's, the first reading passes unanimously, you can do the second reading tonight. And then if the second, if, if not, if not, you need to schedule a second reading at a date certain. But no, it's, it's, passes like a regular ordinance, so thirty days, it's effective in thirty days.
So he said you could do the second reading tonight.
Okay.
As long as everybody agrees. And then we, there is a provision in our ordinance that you can adopt them at the same meeting. They still won't take effect for thirty days, but everybody has to agree to do it. Do you need to go to the second reading?
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the ordinance three five three dash twenty five, to be read by title only? Can we remove that?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? There's a motion before us to accept an ordinance amending the zoning map of City of Deep Bay, ordinance number twenty four as amended, to establish an overlay zone of planned development over certain parcels and changing the zone designation from R two to C one for certain portions of the effective parcels relating to proposed planned development known as the hills of Deep Bay Phase Two. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? Did you say aye?
I said aye.
Everybody. Okay. It was unanimous?
Uh huh.
So we are unanimous on the ordinance. So this will go into effect in thirty days.
That was just the second reading.
Oh, second reading.
And we did adoption.
Oh, oh, now we need to adopt it. Is there a motion to adopt three five three dash twenty five as submitted?
I will make that motion, adopt to adopt ordinance number three five three dash two five.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's going to vote, a motion to adopt three five three dash twenty five as submitted, is there discussion on the motion? And at this point, Kim, maybe we should do a roll call.
Yes, okay, Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council Watson?
Yes.
I'm pardon, pardon me, I think I saw you say yes, Council Rick?
Yes.
Council Sovereign?
Yes.
Mayor Short?
Yes.
Council Paul?
Yes.
And Council Beasley?
Aye.
Okay, we are unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so it will be approved thirty days, so. Ready.
Okay, before this evening, we have another proposal from Rural Properties Partners. They were normally discussing it back in November. And Kim, do you want to bring us up to data, all of them?
I think my staff report is pretty detailed about what they did. They changed things up a little bit, including they've added twenty hours project development, which is key things that are also lacking before we go apply for a grant, is that we don't have all of the specifics. So they're going to help us flesh some of this stuff out. I've indicated just a few samplings of ones that we have spoken with our city engineer about potential grants. We could, potential projects to go out for grants for. We have the funds and you had originally approved them, then they approved the sixty five thousand dollar budget. We just have not actually contracted with them or began to work with them yet.
Okay, well, I will open the floor for discussion on this obtaining Rural Prosperity Partners.
Well, I'm really glad to hear about that, twenty additional hours, because we had these guys contracted under a different name and they really didn't do any.
and they really didn't do anything for us, because they were saying, oh, we can't write anything until we have it all flushed out, so this will make a difference. Um, I was just wondering if there's any um, performance um, policies or performance standards for these grant writers um, in the contract? I don't see any. Uh, it's like intellectual property, they get to keep our, you know, and use our, I guess they are funds, wanting that from other people too, so that might help, but there's nothing about, you know, do they get dinged if they're not successful, we're going to have application, I mean, it does, it seems like we get dinged if we don't.
Um, I don't know that you can hold anybody, uh, unless they're an employee, uh, to any kind of standards if they don't, we don't get it for it. Um, I can propose anything you'd like to Rural Prosperity, but I don't think we can say, well, if you apply for this grant and we don't get it, you're penalized. I don't know any grant writing firm that would do that, that would love that.
Sometimes grant writing firms are actually contracted, they get a, you know, a certain percentage of the and of the um, grant as their payment.
Right, this isn't like that.
This isn't like that, no.
And I think originally that was one of the things earlier when we first started talking, so that was one of the things we they had indicated that if they were going for a big grant, like, I remember that visitation where they were going for a multimillion dollar grant, they could get a proceeds of it, so if we do use them to go after water treatment plant, they might want to say, and you know, if you like a task order, to say we should get a percentage of it, which would be more than reasonable, if they put a lot of effort into getting us the grant, and they get us, they get us the grant. But that's, I put the water treatment plant in there, but I'm hoping to go another path for that.
Mayor. Is there a way, oh, I was just gonna ask a quick question, is there a way to assess after six months how we're doing?
What would that look like? What would the assessment look like?
Just if we received any grants, I mean.
Well, some of these don't even open. My example, a government grant for like a playground, just, we took it for three months, so. Um, maybe it would be really hard to do that.
Okay.
But remember, we would only be paid for what we use. So if we don't use their services, they won't bill us, we won't pay for anything.
That makes sense.
No, I mean, we do, let me rephrase that, we do have, they do want uh, upfront payment to get them started, which I got work for them to do, but I think it's, I think it's a quarter of it, didn't it say that in here? What did it even say? Maybe she changed that, I actually don't remember, did she change that?
I, I don't see.
Oh, I think she changed that for us, yes.
Yeah, it appears there's a, the, the, the manual schedule shows that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's based on a monthly basis, not based on what they, they rush it off with.
Yeah.
That there is this.
Yes, so if we, um, there's, they removed that, remember that earlier when they said that it, the whole thing was due, they didn't.
Right.
Do it, they didn't, they removed them. But I said that was, I said I didn't do it, I remember like that was in there, but that's terrible, so.
Kim, sir?
So if I understand correctly, Kim, you control the outflow on this pace of money going out for specific projects? Correct?
Um, if you mean, I look for grants that will accomplish the projects we want to get done, yes.
And then they, and then they, and then you activate them and they bill us for that project?
No, what they'll do is, according to this schedule, it's a, yeah, now, it's a, okay, basically, I don't like getting that. Anyway, um, and then we get along, and they do prospect, prospecting is part of it, so they help us find other grants, I've only been, I may have only been in the way of advice, so. So they would immediately look at the project list that I give them, um, and we can always add to it, change to it, amend to it, and things that come out more in budgeting that we want to take priority, these are just what Craig and I already know, working with our city engineer that need to get done. So there are some open grants on these things, Denzel Avenue, I don't know what the grant is, but I'm being told there is one, so I asked them to help. So they'll immediately start prospecting for us, they'll immediately start looking at these grant that we already identified these projects and seeing what grants are out there for us. And then identify the timelines, and then identify the, um, what do we need to do, I think what I want to ask them to do is what we do with the city engineer, which was for each specific grant we go forward to a task order. That way, it makes the.
Doing what?
Task order. Makes it easier for me to track the money that's going, going in and out of that particular grant, that particular project. Plus, a lot of times those grants let us either do retro, or we get some of that money back.
So when they're successful in getting a grant for us, do they do the follow-up of submitting proof of what the grant money you should score?
You mean, they do the um, grant administration piece, which is the reporting and stuff like that? No, uh, that's not part of this, but we can hire them to do it, they have that piece. Otherwise, the grant administration would be done by me and my team.
I have another question, uh, on these federal grants, isn't it a fact that federal grants require financial statements?
Not all of them, not all of them.
Not all of them?
It is not, that is not true, not all grants require financial audits.
Which ones require financial?
They will let us know by looking at them, but they identify, they have spoken to the, the, you know, grant writers, the experts, and said that there are grants out there that will require audited statements, they will be looked at and respected.
You are ready to make a motion? I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Um, I moved you through the revised contract services with Rural Prosperity Partners for grant prospecting and grant writing, for total contract value not to exceed sixty five thousand dollars.
Is there a second? A second. It's been moved to accept the proposal from Rural Prosperity Partners, uh, for ninety six five thousand dollars to move forward with the uh, grant writing process, is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion.
Like I've been doing on the project reports, I will keep you updated as what grants we are applying for, projects and all that stuff, so. That would be on the way, I go to your reports, I'll let them know.
Okay. Okay, we are going to tourism marketing, has everybody had a chance to review this staff report on this? And this is very, very good report and lots of information here.
And I think on the twenty first, I will be able to show you um, the segment that they're looking at, I've had, I think, as always, asked about that, um, she'd asked a question about, I haven't actually reached out to the executive director of the chamber, but I know she'll be fine with us using it. However, I believe that way they understood, to me, is it's K T U's, it's not the chamber, so they can make changes to. Because what they have, they haven't, none of us been able to find a really old one that apparently the city did, so. If anybody knows that, those of you who've been here for a long time, let me know, but uh, there, they have a one that was previously done, and they'll just look at modifying that, and um.
Coming, playing, but they.
That was the old one, okay. So um, I put down on the, in the discussions, some ideas of what we can focus on, and how we might structure this program, this campaign. Um, but uh, if anybody has any suggestions, or wants to work on this with me, I would be more than happy to have any assistance. I don't request to know everything there is to know about tourism promotion and marketing, I will be relying on the experts that do this.
Um, yes, um, so the Oregon Coast Business Association has a big um, sustainability campaign, and we might come to check in with them about some wording that they use in.
Okay.
Because they've already kind of written, you know, they, they have their script about what they say in their in their promotions to create sustainable, sustainable.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Good. Uh, I'm not against tourism marketing, but I don't see the value in this for us right now. We have to be able to link our marketing efforts to putting uh, heads in beds in Depot Bay properties. Uh, if we just bring them to the coast, or we, we can't, uh, or we don't have a hook that puts them into a property that we get a room tax on, then we're not getting anything back for it. And, and, you know, right now, with the dissolution of the Chamber of Commerce, the fact that we don't, that we just don't have a marketing arm here, and we need some way to link this marketing that we do with a Depot Bay uh, website, uh, uh, social media, with uh, inducements to travel to Depot Bay and, and stay here within the city limits of Depot Bay. Because if they stay at Salishan, or at the Inadara Press, or any place else in a vacation rental out here, we don't get it, we spend the money, but we don't get any revenue for it. That's what this is about, and I think this is premature. I'm not saying it's a bad program, but we're not set up to do it, what we actually need is a marketing committee, just like every other city has, uh, in, 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 in our region. Uh, where they, you know, look closely at these kind of expenditures, and then make them work for the city. Not for anybody else, not generic, welcome to Depot Bay people, I don't want people just passing through, I want them to, and, and where do we put them? You know, what hotels, what short-term rentals, we have to, this is all part of a marketing plan.
Right, this, the, these campaigns isn't about signaling out a specific place as much as this is signaling out why people should come to Depot Bay.
They, they know.
And come and stay in Depot Bay. Um, you know, I, I will give you just a quick analogy, I've been with the city since August of twenty two. Do you know how often I went off a highway on a one driving through Depot Bay? Never. Before I moved here, I'd never been down to the harbor, I'd never been to North Point, I never knew about the whales, which I'm completely addicted to, I never knew about the seals, and I've been in, in Oregon for thirty years. I don't think we can say that everybody in Oregon knows what we have to offer. So this campaign with the way that, was my suggestion, my ideas to structure it based on what do we want to bring people here over the summer to do, what do we want to bring here over the winter to do, we want to tell people that we have things here in the winter, come and stay, come and watch our storms, come for our king tides. We can easily tie bringing people to Depot Bay with staying in Depot Bay. There's, we have, we have beautiful hotels that have some amazing views, um, and that's what K T U will help us put, crack that type of presentation together, based on their experiences. But the idea isn't to focus mainly on one company, you know, or two companies, because we want to make sure all of our companies get exposure, it's all important that everybody gets exposure. So telling them that we have whale watching will help in dockside exposure, in trade winds, in whales tails, in parades, I mean, um, so we can't make them stay, but we can sure give them enough, here's why you should stay, and that's what I want this program to do. Because I recognize heads of desks is the most important thing we're trying to do.
I think the advertising is a great idea, but I'm wondering if the August segment is too early, if people are gonna see it in August, and by the time winter comes, they will have already forgotten about it.
So, and this is definitely the type of feedback I'm asking to have, so, or you think you may do a September?
September, or even October?
You do that.
Because if they see it in August, they go, oh, that's great, after school starts, we'll take the kids down on the weekend to see whales, but then by the time that time comes, they forgot about it, because they saw it back in August.
Yeah, and then in October, that's good to help focus on the king tides that have brought a lot of people to Depot Bay without us even doing anything about it, so that's great, but how much more, and I'm sorry for the people who, the traffic, I get it, I understand, drives me crazy too, but tourists are important.
And maybe we could broadcast this through our businesses that we're doing this.
Absolutely.
And um, maybe move uh, from spring to June, maybe in, to March, and then June. Because when I was going around uh, in December, talking with different businesses, they have people just day tripping, and um, they're not coming down for the weekends anymore. And I think we need to get people down here to stay and stay in play. Uh, and these prices are fabulous. Uh, and for nine thousand dollars to promote our businesses and, and our um, activities here, I think would be absolutely a bargain, and we've got fifty thousand dollars in our budget to spend, we have tourism dollars uh, that are set aside, and we we need to spend those dollars to let other, other, everybody know that we're serious about um, uh, promoting our business there.
Uh, could I use stay in play?
I would use that, that's affordable.
I like that, isn't that good? I like that too.
They used to do stay in play.
Depot Bay, stay in play.
Stay in play.
Yeah, they used to explain that so well.
Yeah, I think we need to do that, bring that back.
I'm just really concerned about spending money on something that I have to see, I mean, I used to produce television ads, so I know.
They'll shut, we can have them send us the.
You know. Yeah, my first.
Lockup.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And who owns that footage?
Well, see, K T U is letting us do that, but I don't, no, I haven't bought that.
I mean, we talked about.
Because the price, we have a whole ship of.
I mean, there's a lot of questions here, and I agree with um, Council, quite frankly, I mean, there's a few of us on the committee that have a little background in advertising and marketing and stuff.
Right.
So maybe. So we have, it, it, it's kind of like the cart before the horse scenario out here.
We have six months to spend fifty thousand dollars to meet our obligations, or as for tourism promotion marketing.
Give me six minutes on that, it's not a big deal.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm happy to give you six minutes, you can work with K T U if you want to put something down.
And actually, K T U is probably one of my first choices, I watched that station a lot. And they've already given us, you know, I, I want to see, you know, co-op packages, where we do the, like a donut ad, you have a main story, and then you go to local folks, and you go, here's the main story, and what you.
Well, they're not offering that in this option right now, that's a very different thing, this option is what they said under option two, which is three thousand for these specific programs.
I know. Right.
If you want to use them more, there are probably other packages you'd work together, but that's not what this is. This is just.
Didn't it say something about partners in here? Like partners, something about offering something to partners, whatever that's, I thought, oh, it sounds like they're looking at it. Anyway, that's just a way to stretch your advertising dollars. So in other words, if we created a main end, and had a beginning and an end, and then like, somebody with a local business, and we fill the middle of it, there's and then that stretches your, your ad dollars, so, lots of things like that, so. Very channels, I'd like to see the creative, and we definitely need a committee for something. Do you want to make that motion that we committee? And it, and it could be just an informational committee, or.
I, I, how do you do that? I, what you would do is, if you guys could, if the consensus is that we need a what, tourism promotion committee?
Just, it's somebody to look into the ads, and.
Well, I mean, a longer term, frankly, I don't mean anybody more than Counselor Sovereign
Oh, okay.
Talking to K T U and saying, this is what we want. With under this three thousand dollars, I want to see the clip, I want to know.
Right.
But I don't think you can expand the package without expanding the cost.
Yeah.
So by interviewing businesses and, and things like that, that's not this.
Okay.
This is a.
Promote the city.
Segment clip recorded, not a live interview, that they will play, where they show all those areas, they will play, that will be come and stay, stay and play in Depot Bay. You know, or something like that, if you guys want to do something else, and Council Harmon has had her name as a lot.
Uh, I would just like to say, I, I think I understand what you're trying to say. Um, back to the segments, I think June and September would be better, and May and August. I think that we do need some sort of marketing for Depot Bay, I think that this, if we have to spend fifty thousand dollars in six months, this is a good start. I also think that we do need some sort of committee that oversees marketing and tourism, since there's no chamber, or anybody doing that, other than independent social media people. I think we do need some sort of presence on social media if we want to bring people here, because this, uh, I hate social media just as much as a lot of other people, but it is a necessary evil that needs to be addressed. Um, I think that there's two different issues going on here, and one, we do need a serious look at. serious look at marketing and how we spend our money and we have to spend a certain amount of money on marketing and bringing people to Depot Bay. How we do that is probably best by a committee or some sort of meeting or group of people or even hiring some sort of outside firm to do that for people that know it beyond us that live here. As far as this.
I do, pardon me, Counselor, I do have a draft RFP for a DMO, our, our marketing promotion. That was one of the things they have indicated, the council committee has indicated, one. It had just gotten dropped, but I do have a draft that I'm so present to you guys on the 21st. So that might be.
That's great.
Who does this for us?
As far as the specifics, it's, and the reason why I was asking about the clip is that, well, as part of this $9,000, can they make one for us, a professional one that we get to approve? And not something as old or being reused or anything like that. Like have some good high-quality footage of the town, of everything that's in it. And whoever they have in their marketing, they can come up with some cool way to advertise us. I think in a general way, just of bringing people to Depot Bay, this is a good start, especially for that price. I've been there with a lot of advertising and this is actually not very clever. As, you know, as far as trying to create another committee, a group of people to look at marketing, I think that's a great idea because we currently don't have that. And that should definitely be something that can be looked at as far as a committee locally or we hire an outside person to do it.
I think a DMO would be a good, good suggestion at this point. Because I don't think any committee governors right now have the time to really jump in and do this, so.
Well, and that is the experience, even if you made it open to the public, I think always a very small committee. I don't know how many of us here are like marketing.
Yeah, except for Val and she's got a good, it's good, good battle on that, so. Um, turn me over.
Counselor Polo.
Oh, yes, Counselor. Um, I was wondering if we have any way to tell if this is effective. So I think we can fine tune it for the future.
They will give us a report. In fact, I meant to show it to you. Let me attach it. Now, she was giving me a presentation and I stole a slide. She doesn't know I stole a slide, just clipped it. I was gonna show you guys to see what the report looks like. I can still do that, but they, they do, because I asked the presentation and I said, how will we know? Because they have the quick through rate and all that stuff. So.
It will be well spent, I think.
I do too.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we form an ad hoc committee under the Urban Meetings Law that would allow certain city councilors, three city councilors to evaluate this proposal from Channel Two to establish marketing goals and to determine the kind of supporting social media that we need and then to make a recommendation to the city council.
Is there a second? For lack of a second, the motion is denied. We, we do need to move forward with accepting this package. Are you, if, as long as they cancel, you know, the general consensus, the concurrence is to, or they will give us a draft clip. I will find out the question, what they have as far as the ownership and the production that you would suggest that Counselor Herman?
And maybe we should make that as a motion.
Yes.
To, to go like your suggested motion pitch for that.
That's, that's fine.
Approved the marketing recommendation from KATU for three TV campaigns in 2025 for a total contract value of 9,000, provided that we get the additional information needed regarding tracking.
It's been moved to second to accept the package as suggested from KATU. Is there discussion on the motion?
Your Honor, I, I am absolutely for a motion. I would love to see us do TV. KATU, I've been working with KATU for 40 years. It's, it's, it's got a great demo. So that would be good. But I just don't, I think this is premature. I think Counselor Sovereign put her, nailed it when she said we're putting the cart before the horse.
And I, I think we've got a good plan in place that we can review everything before Derek goes online.
And well, if you feel that way, then I'll, I'll go push it.
I do. So it's gonna be that way.
So, you know, the rest of this discussion about, you know, marketing organization, I would support that. But I think it's really clear, we don't have enough people willing to step up for committees. And so if we can have people review things ahead of time, I think that's a good start. But our, this direct marketing organization, that's great, but we really should work or encourage, and I don't know how we do that, to get a chamber organization starting again. This is not our job. And this is not our expertise and we don't have that. So maybe one of the things with this direct marketing organization is to try to encourage the reformation of the chamber as part of that contract. You know, like go door to door or whatever. Because I don't want to get us, this is not our job with this, we're already, you know, a two-hour meeting. I can't imagine taking a lot.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Just one little question. Am I correct in understanding that it won't be, we won't see it here? Only people in Portland say.
No, you'll see it.
Yeah.
If you get KATU. Absolutely.
But it did sound that way.
Yeah.
And somebody will reach out to the Portland Coast Business, that's just. She's got a good connection with them.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure whether this sustainability will fit what we're possibly trying to do, but we'll kick a little bit.
And should the motion include changing the spring campaign till June and summer till?
Well, I need you guys to think about this because we're gonna do it by quarter. Otherwise, you're gonna pay more for you.
What's our budget look like for this? I mean, don't we just spend something?
$50,000.
Between now and the end of June.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so. I think Eva has a fairly good handle on when we get our. First of tourism, so I, I would go with her schedule.
Okay, because whale watching starts in May.
Oh, that's true.
Mm-hmm. It starts in March, but. That's my book. True, starts in March.
So what if.
Every month of the year, but.
It's amazing.
Yeah, this year will be better than last year because we weren't around that much in the May.
So.
I just think that June and September would make more sense to do.
August, yeah, but then you're going into the next fiscal year, so you might not spend.
Can we spend the $9,000 in?
Well, it's $3,000. A short period. Quarter, um, we just did it by quarter, but I think if you guys wanted to just try to get.
The package.
I do the package.
Right now, the end of June.
Yeah, March, May, June, I don't know. What do you think?
We should start with that.
Yeah.
I mean, stay away from weeks like spring break. I mean, that's another thing that happens without.
So we should spend the $9,000 before June.
Pardon?
Before the end of June.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Got aye? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, we have someone wanting to join our salmon commission. John, are you here this evening?
Yes, I am.
Hi, come on up.
Well, good, I like to go.
Oh, I guess. I've been sitting for two hours, so wait. Let's make this quick. So you're willing to help our salmon with this, huh?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and any questions for John? Thank you for stepping up. Absolutely. Thank you for volunteering. It's really a great commission and a wonderful, wonderful.
I know some wonderful people on it. I can't wait to, to get over there.
And dig in.
Touch the processing.
Okay. Any, any questions for John? This is sort of just a formality. We just wanted to meet you and welcome you and thank you. And then, uh, then we vote on you. So welcome to vote. Everybody has a ballot. You have to get out of there.
Um, just gentlemen, um, because you can, there's a, there's a public comment. Opportunity if you wanted to talk to the council about some public comments. If you want to do that.
I can't wait. I'm not soft. I'll send an email on you.
Penny can tell you how you're all of us. He knows.
Okay, counting votes, you?
Yes. Horrible.
I'll put four. I can do that. Or six, it's elegant.
See, now this is.
Thank you, too. Um, is there a motion to accept the ballots as presented?
Which is to elect a nominee.
Can't wait. I'm not sure. I, I still. Okay. Is there a second? It moved to second to accept the ballots for, um, John, what's your last name?
Candace.
Candace Carp. That were unanimous. Um, any discussion on the motion?
All in favor, attended a, um, uh, public meetings law or whatever ethics, whatever that was called.
Yeah.
Session. And it actually, um, any anonymous vote actually, you have to record the names. Now it's unanimous, it probably doesn't matter, but in the minutes, everybody's names actually have to be recorded with their vote.
We do that.
Yeah.
We do that already. One of the things we've been there and I've talked about though is what ordinance is. We're going to do the roll call, but for everything else, we can do the resolution. Do the eyes and then expect for ordinances because those are our legal documents.
Okay.
And I suspect. There you go.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Welcome aboard and the next salmon commission meeting. We don't have.
We don't have one.
Doc on it.
Well, but unless, unless y'all know something I don't.
We're just keeping track of fish.
Oh, okay.
I can count.
Good.
I can count.
Okay. Thank you, John. Welcome aboard.
Okay.
We got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have ordinance. Except right. Okay, we're out of here. We've got ordinance amending and ordinance 354-25 and ordinance amending ordinance 333-22 to revise the membership requirements of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Uh, this is basically just record-keeping. Joyce would like to stay on as chair of our Emergency Preparedness Committee. So we're reducing, um, the councillors to one member of the council.
Your Honor, I would like to move for a first reading by title only, ordinance 354-25, amending ordinance 333-22 to revise the membership requirements of the Emergency Preparedness Committee.
Is there a second? Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, I've got a.
Yeah. That was to read by title only.
Right, and I, I thought we were gonna discuss it first before we.
That was to do the title. There's nothing to discuss on reading by.
It would now, if you want to adopt it.
Yeah.
Adopt it, so.
So now it's ordinance number 354-25, an ordinance amending ordinance 333-22 to revise the membership.
We showed on the title only.
Yeah, we did. We, we sent on. We did?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor of reading ordinance 354-25 by, by title only, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, now we can go forward with the same ordinance.
You need a motion on it?
Yes, if you want to do it by second reading as well.
Tonight.
How do we get to a discussion?
By adoption.
You have to have a motion, you have to do it up. Yeah, but you have to do the second reading first.
Correct.
Right. Okay, so now. An ordinance move for the second reading by title only of ordinance 353-21, amending ordinance 333-22 to revise the membership requirements of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Okay, it's been moved to the second. Is there any discussion on the title?
On the title or the title?
Just the title.
Next.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we need to go forward with, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 354-25?
I would like to move so that we adopt ordinance 354-5, amending ordinance 333-22 to revise the membership requirements of the Emergency Preparedness Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved to the second. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Now you need to.
Now's your discussion.
I guess I'm a little bit confused. So we are trying to restructure a committee in order to keep Ms. King on there.
Yes.
Okay, and I completely respect all the work that Ms. King has done and this has nothing to do with her personally. Um, I guess my only concern is that if someone wants to remain on a committee, are we going to restructure the committee every time someone else is removed on? I think it sends an ethical question and a government transparency issue out there to the public. What if someone else wants to join the committee, a member, a citizen? And also it's the Emergency Preparedness Committee, so as of now, it's two city council and three citizens. I think there should be more than one city council person on it because in the event of a disaster, I think the city council should be more involved rather than just one person. I think that she's done an awesome job and it has nothing to do with that. And I think that if we kept things the same, she can still participate as a member of the public at every meeting and be a member of the public and participate. I just, I think it sends the wrong message to the citizens of Depot Bay that if you want to remain on a committee, we can just change the ordinance so you can stay on there. And I don't, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't look ethically or just in the face of transparency. It would be like extending, you know, there's a reason why there's limits on why people can be here for a certain time as a checks and balances system. To keep it on a professional business level and as a government, we should, everyone has their turn. And this is a public committee, so anybody, including her, she can participate in it still. Maybe not as a title member, but if it's, if it's that important and she's invested in it, I don't see why she can't continue to participate without being an official member. I just, I don't, I don't agree with restructuring a committee based on allowing one person to stay, no matter that person. If it were me in her position, I would say the same thing.
Part of the problem with volunteerism that way is no matter how dedicated someone is, unless it's in official capacity, responsibility doesn't get fulfilled.
So, um, I, I don't see it the same way. Because in the past, Mr. Beasley, among others, have complained that there's too many city council members on a committee and that we should have one city council on a committee. So I think in part, this is more consistent with having one member of the city council and then having people report back from a committee. But, um, I think that Ms. King would have to apply just like anybody else to be a member of the committee. So this doesn't specify that she shall be it.
Right, and that, that was the part that was confusing because it was also to move to appoint her as a suggestive motion. And I would agree, I mean, I would agree in part if we were to restructure the committee this way, that would be fine. But I would invite her and anyone else in Depot Bay to apply for that one position. So that it's at least a fair resolution. So that in case there's anybody else out there that wants to.
That's a good suggestion, I like that. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with just about everything that was said here tonight. The, and thank you Fran for recognizing that I don't want councillors on committees. Our job is to oversee committees and to mix that role up where, you know, you've got councillors on a committee really causes a lot of stress. It is, personally, as a councilman, it has hurt friendships. This, this is a tough enough job already without imposing that kind of an ethical question in that these city councillors have to. uh in that uh these city counselors have to come back and and uh participate in an unbiased debate is really almost asking too much. It's our job to set policy and committees to do their job, so we shouldn't have any city counselors, but I do support this because just uh moving, it's moving in the right direction. So that's what I would say about it.
Is there any further discussion on the motion before?
Did I make the motion?
No.
I did make the motion, isn't that?
Oh, yes, you did, I'm sorry.
Could I amend my motion?
Sure.
I would like to amend this motion to uh actually add two positions to this committee. Uh, as it was pointed out, this committee's been operating for almost four years and I think that what this committee could use and what we could all use is uh some professional minds on that committee that that are, you know, super qualified to help us in emergency planning. And I would like to open up two positions, one that could be open to US Coast Guard, Lincoln County Sheriff, uh Depot Bay Fire Department to bring in their personnel and their counsel to help us on this.
And they already attend some of our meetings during the year.
Yeah, but they're not on the board.
No. And that would be interesting if they would even serve on that. Um, is there, who who seconded the motion? Fran did you second? Do you amend the motion?
No.
Okay. The motion has uh failed. Amended.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. So is there a motion to go forward with this?
Can you restate the motion, please, recorder?
Um, the motion failed, uh so we're just looking for.
No, the motion to amend failed.
Yeah.
Is a regular motion or?
Oh, I I moved to adopt um ordinance three five four dash twenty five and amending ordinance three 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 dash twenty two to revise the membership requirements of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Is there any further discussion? Kim, would you call over the ordinance?
Counselor Beasley?
Aye.
Counselor Pollen?
Aye.
Ms. Short?
Aye.
Counselor Solberg?
Aye.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Counselor Harmon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so there are committee assignments coming up that uh need to be filled, so is, excuse me. So are we um having Joyce have to submit an application?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that on the twenty first.
Um, is it the intention of opening it up, which is what I heard Cogswarm Harmon say, or do you just want counsel, Joyce to submit an application?
I think we can open it up.
Okay.
Let's open it up so that we can be transparent and have other people that want to apply, apply. Okay. So has everyone had a chance to review all of the positions? Um we have a vacant one on the Capcave West Council Governments. Uh, we have one vacant for the Public Safety Coordinating Council. Is there uh any changes, anybody wants to switch around? I'm willing to do the um, I'm still on the solid waste and I'm still on the homeless advisory and the Emergency Preparedness.
Your Honor.
You're on five.
Your Honor, I would uh if the council would have me, I would volunteer for the uh Lincoln County Public Safety Coordinating Council.
Oh, okay.
And I would also, uh, if the council uh finds it uh acceptable, volunteer as the alternate for the Homeless Advisory Committee.
That would be great. Is that? Do we need a motion for those, Kim?
Uh, I I quit uh, did I put that in? No, I mean, once you've agreed, everybody agrees, it's just kind of like, it's not, it's not setting policies, it's just people ready to be on a committee, so um Counselor Beasley, the Public Safety Coordinating and the.
Homeless Advisory Committee.
Right, and then the alternate for homeless as well as the Midcoast Waterfanning Partnership. Correct, Counselor?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
And Counselor Watson, are you okay with the safety committee?
Yeah.
And Counselor Rick, would you move up and be the primary on the Council West?
On the way.
On the, on the Council West Council of Governments?
Uh, no.
No?
But um um Counselor Watson and I will change on the OTCMA.
Oh, okay.
I'll be the rock and she'll be the alternate.
Oh, okay.
Oh, which one?
The Homeless.
I'm on the form of Homeless Government.
So you're just switching.
Switch those off.
Switching up.
Anybody else want to serve on the Council West of Governments? Would that be something that we could be arrested in?
Not right now.
Okay, now we have kind of. Sure, yeah, 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 no, that's no problem.
So Debbie said we would like to be arrested in.
Oh, one of the meetings.
Once a month.
We already have two new counselors on the Emergency Preparedness.
No, 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 this is at the top of the list, the Council, K, with Council of Governments, it's a government entity.
This actually wants a quarter and it's a telephone call.
What's that? Oh, it's a telephone call.
That's it.
You guys, you should help during the day.
It's usually the third.
Yes.
Okay. Debbie said she could do that once a quarter.
Oh, I just.
It's the newest.
What is it?
Oh, um, it's, it's a government entity, they help with like the meals on wheels and uh they have different programs that we can participate in, we are a member of them and uh and they have um informational things for um alternative care in homes and all kinds of things that are available for elderly, so it's really beneficial. And Debbie said she would take that one.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay.
Feeling I'm gonna get drafted to the marketing staff.
There you go, okay, that's a good save.
Okay, you drafted.
Save it, you've all six years.
Okay, we got that all then. Those are all approved, then is everybody in concurrence with the changes?
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, thank you.
Could, could we get an updated um?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we'll do a new list.
And we'll submit that at the uh next meeting.
Okay, uh, we have a request for proposal for accounting and financial services, Kim. Um, you redrafted this for us and has everybody had a chance to go over this? Is this something that needs a training approval or is it just the basic?
Well, it's just an RFP.
Yeah, an RFP, yeah.
We need to go up for additional.
You don't know who we're gonna get, so.
Right.
But I'm sure we'll get some, I'm sure we'll get some, so.
Do we need a motion to accept this?
I I put that in there and uh no, a motion, stand alone.
Oh, oh, okay. I'll move to approve and oppose request for proposal for the provision of accounting and financial services in support to the City of Depot Bay.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to accept the uh RFP that we have before us, um, is there discussion on the motion?
I have discussion.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the recorder, what was the reason that this CPA gave us that she's not interested in continuing to work with the city?
There were some irreconcilable differences in how the accomplishment of the back audit should have been done. Um, she wanted to start current and go back and I believe we should start back and go forth because I know that the auditing firm that had an issue was starting with um without good starting balances. Um, even though she thought we could work with it, there were some other things that I was not comfortable with. Um, so we just kind of pardon ways and decided that we probably won't kind of work.
Did we pay them anything?
Five hundred dollars, maybe, maybe two fifty, I think, for just some ice work that she did.
Did, did uh, did the CPA give us a letter of resignation?
She sent me a memo, or an email.
May, uh, we see the email, would you please?
I will forward you the email.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm a little frustrated with this issue because uh in my memory we have attempted to bring in a, a, a number of people to work on this issue of audits, we, we even had the Council of Governments in here and we had irreconcilable differences. Uh, we had a, just recently, we had a previous CPA before this, I don't know what the, the deal was there, we had Grimstat prior to that.
The auditing services?
Uh, but the, it's, it's a little frustrating here, uh, if I don't, I just don't get this irreconcilable differences, if, if the CPA it's always been my impression when I was working with a CPA or an attorney, I tell them what I want to do but you let them go do the job so long as they get it done. And uh and it is frustrating because the, you know, the City of Stellat's recently finished, got their audits done. Walport got their audits done. Lincoln County got their audits done.
Walport got the, not all of them finished. They got one of them.
Well, we're making pro, you know, they're making progress.
As we, we got nineteen twenty done, I'm still waiting, I'm probably not with Isler, but.
We, we're not done with that yet, I, I mean, I'm, I'm really looking forward to putting the notch in on that. Uh, okay, well, I'll just look forward to that email, thank you.
Yes. So um I'm not um certain about where we are and if this the description of work under the auditing services is really a good description and people are gonna be surprised when they get here. So it says the um um the, so it says that we have most of the information for the nineteen where is that, two twenty is nearly finalized, is that a statement?
Mm-hmm. I've been working very hard on twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two and finishing the balances for the others, so yes.
So um the audit, rather than the CPA, the, the financial audit is almost complete?
No, they haven't even started the financial audit. That was one of the things that was going to start in the course of the year.
That's why I'm.
The paperwork is ready for some, an auditor to come in and review and get started, so twenty twenty one is ready for an auditor to come and get started. Except that one of the things that the previous CPA was going to do, which I sent her was review the balance sheet and see where we were. I never got a report back from her whether or not how our balance sheet looked, so um, so what I would want this CPA to do would be to look at the balance sheet so that they can get comfortable with the way our records are, so they would be the primary work in the auditors.
Okay, so uh, that's why I'm confused because it says currently the city is three years behind in financial audits and there's a trend, fiscal year nineteen twenty is nearly finalized. That seems to have um referred back to the audit rather than.
Nineteen twenty is nearly done, yes, we're waiting for our final corrections. Which I finally got from the CPA what was sent to him. Cause I didn't even know what was sent to him. So nineteen twenty should hopefully be wrapping up by the end of this month. Um, the holidays, of course, will get eaten down, um, so the next ones, twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, sort of four.
So then the role of the so the auditing services um for asking for CPA to be the new auditor?
No.
No.
We still have Tara Kent for the CPA will be what I would have time, if I was doing this, I would have time to do, which is provide, help provide the paperwork, talk to the auditor, ask questions.
Okay, so it says. I'm not meaning to be difficult, I'm just trying to figure out why does it say the scope of work to be for, number one says auditing services.
I can change that to um CPA. Audit services, not auditing, audit services.
Don't you'd say preparing financials for audits?
Yes. I uh, I can say prepare for audit.
Yes.
For, prepare for audits.
For, it says uh three years, you know, is that correct, then, right?
It's four.
Four, okay, so we should change that.
Yes.
For the, so B would say annual audits? Provide financial information, materials and information requested by auditor.
Well, the way I read is that this would be for each audit, this is what they would be doing for each audit.
We need to say for each annual audit.
That's fine.
Yeah. Good, I think the rest is, they are gonna do general accounting services, number two, that's it.
Yes.
Okay. And then this miscellaneous services is assist, do you write? This latest services to support.
This is having a financial guru to help me one things I can't do, because right now I have no resource to go through except OCCMA. So Counselor Pollen, when you're talking about brand administration, this would be a good place for them possibly help with that if we start getting a bunch of brands because there's a lot of paperwork to keep, keep those going, so that's kind of why I threw that one in there, because it would be helpful to do. Thank you.
Do you think there's people out there, have you heard other councilor getting their stuff in, right?
Yeah, it's the difference between, the CPAs are not a problem.
Right.
Auditors, the firms, auditors are a problem.
We got that.
We got that.
Okay, so that's good. So again, in the description, I, I think it says provide financial audit support, is that a correct?
That's correct, is what they're doing.
Is that, people will understand what that means?
Uh, a CPA will understand what that means. And if they don't, I don't want them.
May I ask a question? Kim, do you have everything in the records, do you mean?
I have everything.
You have everything in our files that you need to complete these audits?
I think so, I have in fact, the only problem that I'm running into right now, for example, is trying to the way they did the accounting prior to us is I went to look for some receipts and they aren't in the current fiscal year, they go to the previous fiscal year. So that messed up the previous auditors as well, that messed up Isler and Nudie, they had a problem with that, the way they did bookkeeping. I also did a review in nineteen, uh, twenty twenty one and I found some brand things that were, the ARCA stuff that was appropriated in the wrong place, so I had to fix that, but they're, they're pretty good, we've got the back news for the documents, so. So I'm ready with twenty twenty one and as soon as I finish the last two statements, um, I'm moving on to twenty one twenty two, yeah, yeah.
So one final thing, sorry.
Yes.
Should we, the proposal due date, um, should we keep that up or until filled, like we've said on others, or do we want?
Uh, we don't generally do that on the RFPs, you have to have a date, because otherwise you won't get responses because they get busy and they'll get.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
So in the event that we don't get a response by January thirty first, do we just come back and do this again?
We can talk about, okay, we can talk about other options. Okay, I can come back and say, hey, we have not anybody, um, I have a plan for where I'm gonna send them to, which is um a bunch of contacts from my fellow city managers, they've given out some CPAs that are in the business. I did not, I did find out from our previous CPA that Tara Kent, the auditor, started her own firm. So that's actually better there, so, then we'll be getting her busy. Maybe that's why she started her own firm, honestly, I don't want that.
Do we need a motion to accept the RFP?
I, I think I put on your motion on the cover sheet.
Yep.
Is there a motion to accept the RFP as presented?
Well, with the changes.
Yeah, with changes, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved to second to accept the request proposal with changes as presented, is there further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We're down to city staff reports and project updates and boy, we are under construction out there, man. Not only is our harbor looking fabulous um
Bay Street.
Bay Street is coming.
I love that sidewalk, oh my gosh.
Any questions uh for staff on updates, uh, what's going on in town? Any questions uh, for staff on updates? Let's put it on in town.
I have one question.
Yes, listen. And it actually, I don't think it was on here. So um, we had gotten a um, letter um, from the fish plant operator saying he'd be done by December twenty fifth, the end of the season.
He's done, he's at the end of the month.
So um, are we gonna re-aver, what are we gonna do with that?
Well, what we are gonna do Brady, today, right, or yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday Brady had called, went down and took a look at, see how things were. Brady's had some concerns about how it would be left. Brady can give you a report about that, but our next step is to hire, we need to hire an inspector. They did all the work that they did without a permit from Lincoln County. So Lincoln County is, it's not a unsafe building, it's just, there's no permit, so we have to. So what I'll do is I'll, we'll get an inspection done, we'll bring an inspection report to the council and then from that point, you decide when you wanna do it.
You did leave it with a little bit of.
There's, there's a lot of modified electrical plumbing, things like that.
Plumbing. There's a back deck that's falling apart, but the guy's gonna have a caution table on it's a hat.
Yeah.
It's a hat.
There's some work.
Yeah, there will be work that needs to be done. We just don't know the guy, plumbing and electrical, if there's any structural.
Is selling it an option?
That will be left to council to decide.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'll direct this to Brady, uh, on the construction that's going on right now on Bay Avenue with the sidewalk. As a rule, before this happened, you couldn't get a shoelace between my vehicle and another vehicle on that corner down there. How is this going to affect traffic?
So the corner's staying the same, we're not going that far, but uh, we're going to widen what we're taking away from the north side, uh, from the south side, would be added to the north side.
Okay, thank you.
There's a few cars that park over there, they're, they're gonna have to.
Yeah, bankers, are they, are they gonna be okay?
Well, it's gonna be tight fit. The road, borderline will be.
Are we communicating with that?
Oh yeah, we're communicating with all of them.
Everybody knows, everybody's being communicated with.
Yeah. Okay.
Then we don't have anywhere else to park. They were concerned about this, but um, our city attorney clarified it wasn't such a bad.
Okay, good.
It's good.
Yeah, it's not.
The road will be widened over there, but we'll still have.
I have one more question. Uh, and I don't see it on here, but we did just buy a property ostensibly for a parking lot. Now, I heard a room, somebody came up and asked me, they had heard that that was going to be um, a cash site. Is there any plan for that property to become a cash site?
At one of the previous council meetings during the discussions, it was mentioned that was an opportunity for one, but nothing has been decided regarding the comments.
My question is on on that then, is if we're voting on something to be something, shouldn't it be something?
It wasn't, or.
It was not, yeah.
No, we just bought vacant land.
There was speculation, that's all there's been. Nobody's decided anything. Um, the council will need to decide, figure that was probably a good, good budget discussion to see what to do with that.
Right. Is that sale final?
Oh, it's done, it's done.
I, I still.
A crowd new owners of a new lot.
I still would like to take down, try to use some time to look at the inventory of the fifty plus properties that the city already has.
I can absolutely send you the inventory. They are writing, yeah, yes, that's it.
I did it. Yeah. I, and then I put together that spreadsheet where I was born, lots of every property that the city owns, just like fifty of them. So.
Well, they're not all property per se, there are some of the streets, they are.
Oh, and that, yeah, not even category.
They're not all.
But anyway, I, we own a heck of a lot of land. The question is, is it all being used, uh, currently?
Most of it's seen and clean.
Wasn't this what?
Seen and clean.
And then the one across the street.
Pocket.
Our heads. The one across the street.
And that's another area, not so we'll need to decide what they wanna do with the keg box, the keg box.
I actually just passed back to Bay Street, maybe I had a question for Brady. Did you have any mirrors hanging out?
We're gonna get mirrors, yes.
Yeah.
Remember, there always used to be one.
With our city engineers here on Friday, I'm gonna ask them to go get where we should place them.
Uh, I just on the.
Long thought we should have them, cause I don't know.
Well, there was one on the corner that was vandalized, but yeah, that was like.
Is it just the one right there on the one corner by the.
There's two places, one near the top of the hill because as you come up.
Yeah.
We're so hoping that the sidewalk means people will stay off the street.
Right.
In fact, we did talk about putting a sign down.
It's gonna. Incoming traffic, especially.
That, yeah, so there, you know. It, that street will be a little more narrow.
Right, so a mirror would help just.
Absolutely.
I already had a close call.
I wish we could make people stay on their side of the road, but uh, yeah. There's a lot of people that come too fast up there and that's way wide, worried.
Yeah, it's all, it's dangerous. Okay, moving on, um, closing public comments. Are there public comments?
I have one question of Kim.
Yeah.
In your advertising with the TV station, could you include a short video clip of someone getting drenched by the horn?
Tim, oh, that would be great.
Adding, adding a comment, if this happens to you, you'll need a place to stay and dry out.
You know, my first winter here, I was so proud when I got drenched by the horn. I said, hi, I'm from Deportive. Email it to me, that's.
Don't see anybody over there. Um, do some comments, please. Okay.
So meet you over here in Deportive over on Collins Street and uh, X, this has been like, I really didn't get to stay this long, but I wanna tell you it's really good, a lot of things accomplished and I really appreciate all the hard work for you. So thank you for all of that and welcome to the council people. And um, I'm glad you answered about the auditing because that was the first thing on my question list was where are we with the auditing? And I felt like I got a lot of really good answers on that that we're, keep working on, so. I'm encouraging you, so. And the other one was the marketing issue. Uh, I kind of tell you, having owned a business here for eight years, South of the Bridge, uh, but that was the one thing we kept asking about and so we just kind of did our own marketing. We then used to do it in other offices in California, so we just repeated it on network. And um, then emergency preparedness. And these are like three areas I'm interested in here very seriously in the city. And so if there's any committees that need help, I'll come and bring my application in, uh, I think tomorrow.
We can do somebody else on the budget mini.
Oh, citizen?
Okay.
I was going to see if you wanted to do it.
Yeah, I will fill out, I actually filled out the application, cause I came and got it. And I just wanna say thank you for your hard work because you know, I know it's all along your situation too. And anything I can do, um, I am gonna talk a little bit to emergency preparedness, cause I do have a big, pretty piece aside of a piece of property and maybe talk to them about if there's anything I can do to help out with that situation, so.
Thank you.
About that more later, okay? So thank you all for all the work.
Okay, appreciate it.
Love living here, my man.
Um, one last thing is council comments and I I'd like to start because um, Thursday is our National Day of Honor for President Carter and um, I I really uh, respect that man and what he is. Uh, especially with the um, his beginning with the um, where you build your own house.
Have a question.
We have a humanity, humanity, yes. We used to do that down on Florence and it was wonderful. Um, any other comments this evening?
Oh, I did sign in.
Thank you, Mayor.
You should have something else.
No, sign in.
Help me sign in, please, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I wanted to remark on the minutes. Thank you uh, for producing these wonderful minutes, uh, September, October, uh, minutes. Uh, it it's important that we have these updated. Uh, and I wanna let you know, uh, recorder, about something that I have heard. And that's the use of AI to produce minutes. Uh, I think there are many cities that are doing this right now, many government candidates. One way that I I believe, uh, one local city is using this. They post their uh, video on YouTube and YouTube uh, has an automatic transcript function. And then that function is fed into the uh, AI software, which is fairly inexpensive. And uh, with the directions to produce something in the area of, you know, like a thousand words, including everything. And I'm hoping that anything we can use or do to bring those minutes up. And I also was at a point where I wanted to find out what was going in on in some committees. And uh, and have also seen that committee minutes were uh, were lagging behind. So this is a very, in in my mind, you know, the law says you don't have to do anything on this except put a video up or put a recording out there. You don't have to provide written minutes. To me, it's it's every, it's very important in terms of transparency and getting people involved in our meetings, that we make all of our work transparent and available to the citizens and to us. Having those minutes is invaluable uh, to me in determining where we're at and what we're doing. It's like I had a question tonight about this property. I I personally, I don't think we should be buying property without a good reason. And uh, and I wouldn't have made an idiot of myself by thinking that we had bought that for a parking lot. That's, that's what I thought the RFP was about. And I don't remember that part about using it for, uh, you know, cash or anything else. So that, that's helpful to me. And uh, but these minutes that you produced, uh, that you and your staff produced, I thought were very well written and very comprehensive. I'd just like to see uh, more of them brought up sooner. It was hopefully the week, the the following meeting would be ideal.
Debbie, did you have any comments? Bring me. Go. Um, so I went up to the hills of Deportive to kind of try to figure out where everything was and looking at them. The place is trashed. There is garbage everywhere and um, I'm just hoping Brady, he might be able to talk to, he might have already mentioned that there's, you know, there's construction people and you know, there's a lot of wind, but they're not cleaning up. There's styrofoam pieces, there's plastic bags, there's, you know, lunch materials. It's just, you know, it's not a professional development, you know, pick up and um, you know, just.
I I will email Chris and those folks and tell them that that they need to watch that. I'm sure he's been up there, he probably saw it today, if he went up there, depending on when he's been in town.
It's the hills, but it's also in the entranceway by Whale Watch, there's trash.
I've been up there. I'm here to watch the, cover the construction.
Yeah. Well, the lawn, you know, where it curves, it goes into the, which maybe they own now, but that forested land, they just stuck over there, but also in the bottom right by the utility boxes and stuff. Adam, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanna suggest that we all get together like we did um, four years ago and have a little meeting about, I think, what was most important to us and.
Mr. Teacher.
Our goals.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
That, and do that sometime soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then also, um, where they're building that new house, I think I emailed you about this before, on Lane, the corner of Lane and Williams.
Oh, yes.
Their, theirs lies in the road, there are no thorns, it is.
Yeah, we reached out to that.
There's one, yeah.
There's gravel and they've stacked up two by fours and it's been there for over five days.
I I didn't, I don't have that information, so I have to send them an enforcement letter.
I talked to.
We have the address on half of the city, West of.
I I talked to him, but then I heard that and he said he would get his move and.
If they don't have the address, if they don't have a good way to go to enforcement to.
It was for a trailer, you know, these pictures of.
The trailer, yes.
And I was in the, that was. Is that.
Yeah, cause how old you have it?
The comment. Yeah. That's all right.
And was there, was there.
I'm gonna call P I now, cause I'm.
And all.
If, if I could comment on that, you know, I've had conversations with that property manager. Right, yes. And they don't have any, they don't have anywhere equipped stuff. That's, that's their problem. They were putting it on the alley, which is the opposite side of where it's at now. But that meant that nobody could get into the properties that face out onto Highway one oh one. So I, as the property manager on those complained and told them they cannot block that alley, which was covered with garbage and nails and, and their building materials and everything else. And I said, you need to put the fence back up on the property line and you cannot put that stuff in the alleyway. So what did they do? They moved it to
The right.
the opposite side and it's now sitting in that corner right of way. And um.
They put it in their, in the basement of whatever they're building.
Well, they have the empty, the 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 spaces right behind where they're, you know, they haven't put foundations in it.
Yeah, you said the lot, right.
Oh, so you talked to him, okay, so. Okay, I, we need to, alright, we need to, we need to, like, oh, no, no, you said that the name on the permit was different.
I, I gave a try, I gave a try.
That's the same.
Alright. Eva, did you have any comments this evening? Okay, and I wanna enter in the meeting, but I wanted to invite everyone to have a cupcake, um, to welcome them and say bye bye to. So we are, did you, did you make it?
I did, and I do not leak, so.
Yeah.
And I hate frosting and I just hide your frosting, it's like that, like.
I'm gonna go make a glass of wine, cause.
I will, uh, let's, let's do, I'm actually doing.
I'm not gonna pass up.
We'll have conversations.
Yeah.
Here I am. Yeah, we'll, we've uh, we've just come to work.
You have the harbor.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll. Thank you so much. There you go, okay, thank you especially. Oh, the register.
Good luck.
Hi, how are you? Good to see you.
You know.
Congratulations. Hello.